Happy New Year. I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I move to certify that suggested each member's knowledge of the Williamsburg James City County School Board while a closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Oenby. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. There's no discussion. Serza, will you call the roll, please, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. That brings us to roll call. Ms. Serza, will you call attendance roll call, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Oenby.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Next up is item 3.02, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move of approval. The agenda is presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. Agenda is approved. I'm gonna hand the gavel over to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2018?
So moved.
All those in favor of opening the floor for nominations for Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2018? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I accused very well.
All those opposed to opening the floor to nominations for Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2018? May I have nominations for a School Board member to serve as Chair of the School Board for the calendar year 2018?
Dr. Heron, I move that Kara Cook be nominated to serve as Chair for the school year 2018. Calendar year 2018.
Any other nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations for Chair of the School Board for the calendar year 2018?
Dr. Heron, I move to close the nominations.
Take a vote on closing the nominations? Everyone in favor of closing the nominations?
Aye.
Aye.
Following the script here. All those in favor of Kara Cook being Chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2018 calendar year signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, signify by saying nay. Now, I congratulate Ms. Cook on being nominated as Chair, and I'm going to pass the gavel over to share the rest of the meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I just would like to say that it's my honor to work with all of you, and I appreciate your confidence in me, and I will do all that I can to continue to work with Dr. Heron and each of you to further the work of this leadership team, always with a focus on kids first, so. That brings us to item 4.02, appointment of a Vice Chair. Just as a point of order, Ms. Serza, do I have to ask for a motion to open the floor, or do I go straight to nominations?
Straight to nominations.
Thank you. May I please have nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2018?
Madam Chair, I nominate Ms. Lisa Oenby to serve as Vice Chair for the calendar year 2018 as Vice Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
All in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, I'd like to ask those in favor of Ms. Oenby serving as Vice Chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2018 calendar year to signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Got that. Serza, okay, thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Oenby. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you for this opportunity. I look forward to working with the Chair and the rest of my board colleagues, and I'm excited for the upcoming year.
Before we move on to the appointment of a Parliamentarian, and I'd just like to take time to thank Ms. Taylor for her exceptional service as Vice Chair last year. You provided thoughtful and critical input as, you know, at the agenda prep and on policy, and really appreciate your thoughtful work over the last year, so thank you. All right, that moves us to the appointment of the Parliamentarian. I'd like to ask for nominations for Parliamentarian of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2018, please.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Julie Hummel for the position of Parliamentarian for the calendar year 2018.
Any other nominations? Okay. Can someone please make a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Okay. I'd like to take a vote on closing nominations. All in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So with that, I will ask all of those in favor of Ms. Hummel, Ms. Julie Hummel, being Parliamentarian of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2018 calendar year, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, any opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you.
Like to say any?
I will continue ever to do a really good job with the comment card. That little blurb, I have to say, I will continue to do an excellent job with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. That brings us to item 4.04, appointment of Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that Ms. Janet Serza be appointed Clerk and Ms. Pamela Haywood be appointed Deputy Clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board through 2018.
That requires a second, is that correct, Ms. Serza? May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Serza, should we do roll call, vote, or voice vote for this?
Vote.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations to both of you. And thank you for your service for many, many... How many years has it been?
Quite a few.
We will leave it at that. Okay. Item 4.05, appointment of Superintendent's Designee. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that Mr. Scott Thorpe be...
Serves as the Assistant of School Leadership. Have a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Do you have to agree?
No.
Just checking. Would everybody in favor of appointing Mr. Scott Thorpe to serve as a Superintendent's Designee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Thorpe. That brings us to 4.06, appointment of a member to serve as the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee. May I have a nomination, please?
I would like to nominate Sandra Young for the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee.
Have a second?
Second.
Great. It's been moved and seconded. With all those in favor of Sandy Young serving as this Board's representative on the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Sandy. Item 4.07, appointment of a member to the Special Education Advisory Committee. Can I have a nomination, please?
I would like to nominate, um, Lisa Oenby to the Special Educat...
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Oenby has been nominated to serve as a Special Education Advisory Committee Member representing this Board. All in favor of that nomination, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Oenby. Thank you. 4.08, appointment of two members to the Student Advisory Committee. Can I have a nomination for two members to serve in that capacity?
Madam Chair, I move that Sandra Young and Holly Taylor both be nominated to serve in that capacity on the Student Advisory Committee.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Young and Ms. Taylor have been nominated to serve on the Student Advisory Committee. All in favor of that nomination, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Great. 4.0, congratulations and thank you. 4.09, appointment of two members to serve on the Policy Committee.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Julie Hummel and Lisa Oenby to the Policy Committee.
Ms. Hummel and Ms. Oenby have been nominated to serve on the Policy Committee. All in favor of that nomination, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Congratulations and thank you. 4.10, appointment of two members to the School Liaison Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that Kara Cook and Mr. Jim Kelly be nominated to serve in that capacity as a school liaison.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of Mr. Kelly and Ms. Cook serving on the School Liaison Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 4.11, appointment of School Board member to serve as a trustee to the New Horizons Board.
I would like to nominate Jim Kelly to serve on the New Horizons Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Jim Kelly has been nominated to serve as our trustee on the New Horizons Board. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. 4.12, appointment of School Board member to serve on the WHRO HRET A Board.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate James Beers, Dr. James Beers, for appointment as our School Board member to serve on the WHRO School Board. Not School Board, just the Board.
Second.
Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded that Dr. James Beers will represent this Board on WHRO Board. It is of note, actually, that Mr. Kelly serves, I should have mentioned this earlier, as the Vice Chair of the New Horizons Board, and that Dr. Beers serves as the Vice Chair of the WHRO but will ascend to Chair in this calendar year. Is that correct, Dr. Beers?
Yeah, but I don't think it begins until, I think, July 1. I think that's, yeah.
In both cases, that's quite an honor. So all in favor of Dr. Beers serving on the WHRO Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And then finally, 4.13, approval of the schedule of School Board meetings for 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the regular School Board meeting dates for 2018 is presented.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a similar calendar that we've had in previous years, right? Because we have two in June, we have one in July, one in December.
Yes. I think May's been shifted a little bit to committee city council. Is that right, Ms. Serza?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have three meetings in May. Four?
Two.
Two. Sorry.
Yeah. And that, that's compatible with our budget calendar, right?
We move them around for election days and things.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Oenby.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye. All right, we have a calendar. Next up is item 5.01, announcements and Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome back and happy 2018 to all. Three students were recently named as winners in the Virginia Senator Monty Mason's Fourth Annual Art Contest. Art created by Zachary Folkenberry and Kerry Mims, students at Clarebird Baker, and Holly Dallin, a student at Lewis Hornsby Middle School, will be displayed at Senator Mason's Office in Richmond. Congratulations to each of these talented artists. Thanks to the efforts of Warhill High School Senior Alyssa Bangut, the Warhill Student Council Association, SCA sponsor, Chandler McKnight, and over 115 volunteers, Warhill High School was the site of a soup kitchen over winter break. Thanks to support from local businesses and the Williamsburg Hotel and Motel Association, food was plentiful at the holiday dinner, and the group was also able to donate hams and turkeys to additional families in need. I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to everyone who dedicated time to this effort. And finally, winter definitely arrived over the break, and there is snow in the forecast for later this week.
What did you say?
I think I mentioned the word snow yet again. In most instances, due to the timing of storms and the need to assess road and facility conditions, families and staff will receive a morning phone call from our telephone notification system if school is delayed or canceled. If your phone number has changed, please contact your school and provide the updated information. We will also post the information on our website, and we'll send out notifications via Facebook, Twitter, and local television stations. Those are all of the announcements I have this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there any other announcements? All right. If not, the next item on the agenda is Citizens Comments, but if I understand, there are no...
No speaker cards.
Speaker cards, so. We will move on to discussion of proposed agenda items, the first being 7.01, V SBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. This is an item that we review every January, and will be on the meeting for next month, the next meeting, the second one in January, for approval. Any discussion or comment on that? Okay. Hearing that, we'll move on to the next item, which is the W J C C Schools Foundation Donation for Innovative Learning Grants. That's essentially here, if I understand correctly. Ms. Hummel and Dr. Heron is just a placeholder for next meeting, and in next meeting, they'll be here to present.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we'll look forward to that. And that brings us to 7.03, middle school, excuse me, redistricting. Do you want to start, Dr. Heron, or...
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As you are aware, we're back to discuss the draft middle school redistricting maps, and Mr. Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies is here to present to the Board this evening, per your request. At our last meeting, you asked us to take it to the company to consider whether it was possible or not to produce maps that would bring us to within 10% difference in socioeconomic status of students, and Mr. Leopold's going to present some of those options for your consideration tonight. Thank you, sir.
It's great to be here. I wish I could have brought some warmer weather. Real quick, just to kind of reiterate the process, we've gone through this a lot of times. We started off with our measurable criteria. We developed some options internally. We took them to the community for feedback, and here we are today with some feedback and some revised maps based on some discussion from you. Our original timeline, we've gone a little bit off kilter here towards the end. We're kind of ahead of schedule. We're having board discussions now instead of having more working group meetings. I just want to briefly go over the criteria again that we used to develop these scenarios. We focused on utilization, proximity, and longevity, and then additionally, we looked at socioeconomic status and the neighborhood concept. So here's our original middle school options. One thing that I did want to bring up, during the community meetings, it was determined that a small portion of Ford's Colony was split in options one and two. There were a total of seven students that were in this area. This has been remedied in all the maps that it was impacted, and it was a negligible impact because it was only seven students, but that's just something that we caught and we updated in all the maps of the numbers you're going to see tonight. Again, just to reiterate, this is our current utilization, enrollment utilization, and socioeconomic balance based on our current attendance areas. So we know we have an imbalanced utilization across the three schools that we have now. 5.3% of students do not attend their first or second closest school, and we do have a socioeconomic's imbalanced, and so we've got that high of 53% at Berkeley and 22% at Hornsby. Just reviewing our option one, what this does is we balance utilization across all schools. We're 86% at Berkeley, 86% at Blair, 79% at Hornsby, and 83% at Tuano. Our socioeconomic balance goes between 29 and 47%, and we don't have any additional neighborhood splits. Here's the side-by-side to show the current boundaries and the proposed boundaries for option one, because I know we have some, some people do not like the crosshatch maps that we have.
I'm not the only one.
So, yeah, absolutely. And so this is the, these denote the actual change areas. The Blair, proposed Blair boundaries being shown in blue. And then again, this is our side-by-side. Tuano in green, Hornsby in pink, Berkeley in purple, and then on the proposed map, we have the Blair Zone in blue. Looking at option two, we get a little bit better balance here. Our utilization is balanced across all schools. Our highest utilized school in this scenario is Hornsby. Our socioeconomic balance is between 28 and 43%. We don't have any additional neighborhood splits. I just want to note that the big difference, again, between option one and option two is we've got the Merrimack Trail area here going into Blair in option one, and then in option two, it's the Grove. Here's our side-by-side again. And again, this is unchanged. The only change made to these maps since we presented to the community was that little Ford's Colony fix that we mentioned earlier. Here's our third option. Again, we've got good utilization here, but we do have Tuano at 85%. Our socioeconomic balance is kind of unchanged from where it is today. It ranges from 52 to 23%, and again, no additional neighborhood splits. We've got about 20% more students that would not attend their first or second closest school in this scenario. And here's our side-by-side for option three. So for survey results, I know that you guys saw in detail the results that we collected. We had a total of 750 survey responses that were collected from middle schools between November 28th and December 10th. We had a total of 19 community members attend one of the two middle school meetings held on the November 30th and December 5th. This is just kind of our overall level of approval for each of the scenarios. Again, they may look like they're different, but they are relatively close when we look at them kind of statistically here. We did not, I think it's worth noting that we did not have as many responses from middle schools as we did high school, and so that kind of dominated the conversation quite a bit. Based on feedback that we got from last time, we did develop some additional options. What we wanted to do is create some options that balanced socioeconomic a little better, and what we wanted to do is we created three different options that had the greatest difference is 10% between the highest low SCS school and the lowest low SCS school, or high SCS school, rather. I think one very important thing to note in these options that you're about to see is that we only impacted areas that were impacted in options one, two, and three. So we're not moving an area that we didn't have the opportunity to collect feedback on. Does that make sense? So we didn't, we didn't bring anybody new to the table that may not have wanted to participate because they looked at the maps and they saw that they weren't impacted. That being said, there are, in these options, they may be proposed to move to a different school than was proposed in the original options. But we're not, we're not deviating from that geographical area that we impacted in the original three. Does that make sense to everybody? So here's our middle school option four. And so I'm going to go through these in a little bit more detail because these are new. And so the areas that are crosshatched in the red are areas that are moving from Tuano to Hornsby. We've got three areas here. Again, the areas that are in the blue are moving from Hornsby into Blair or Berkeley into Blair. We do have a little area here that's crosshatched in purple that will be moving from Hornsby into Berkeley. Utilization is relatively balanced across all schools. We have an additional 14.7% of students that would not attend their first or second closest school. Our socioeconomic status is balanced between 32 and 42%, so there's our 10% that we're looking at. Again, we don't have any additional neighborhood splits. Looking at our socioeconomic's here, our utilization, we're 80% at Berkeley. We're 87% at Blair, which is a little high. Hornsby is at 80. Tuano is at 87%. And again, remember, that's the area that we're anticipating growth. Socieconomic balance here, 41% at Berkeley, 42% at Blair, Hornsby 32, Tuano 32 as well. And so Hornsby goes from 20 up to 32. Tuano goes from 31 to 32. Berkeley goes from 51 to 41, and Blair would open at 42%. So here's the side-by-side maps for option four. Option five. We are very similar as far as utilization goes to option four, 80% at Berkeley, 87% at Blair, 82% at Hornsby, 85% at Tuano. The moves in this map are much more centralized than we had in scenario four, and so this area here would be moving from Tuano to Hornsby. We have Scott's Pond here, which is an area that is currently zoned to Lafayette at the high school level. So this is one of those detached zones at the high school level that is surrounded by Warhill. We have, in this case, this would be a detached zone that would go to Blair. And so it's the same kind of alignment there. Again, this was, this was made in an attempt to balance that Does that make sense? I saw some funny looks.
That Scott's Pond area is the area I'm concerned with, that they would, it's just such a small number that goes on to a high, would this solve that problem for the kids that are in Scott's Pond, whatever middle school they go to, they're not going to be the lone, the lone neighborhood moving on to their high school?
I'll have to look. Karen, can you look that up real quick? Yeah, we'll get that information for you. I don't just know it off the top of my head. So this area here, this would, this would go from Hornsby into Blair. We have, in this one, this is, this is where we had a neighborhood split. Powhatan Secondary would split between Berkeley and Blair at News Road. And so this crosshatched area in the purple would go from Hornsby to Berkeley. We've got this little area down here, this would move from Berkeley to Hornsby. So we've got an additional 16% of students that would not attend their first or second closest school. Our socioeconomic status range is from 32 to 41%. And just again, we have that neighborhood split at Powhatan Secondary. Looking at our socioeconomic's, Berkeley would go from 51 to 39. Blair would open at 41. Hornsby would go from 20% to 34. Tuano from 31 to 32. Whoop, too fast. Looking at the side-by-side of option five.
It's just that blue lone area, what do you call them?
Satellite zone?
Satellite zone. That's Scott's Pond.
And so I do believe, just looking at this now, they would be with the, you know, the majority of the students that are in this Blair boundary would go to Lafayette.
So that's an... So that's an attempt to keep them.
Correct. I don't know if it was, it was the sole purpose of it, but it was a side effect, rather. Okay, moving on to option six. So again, we've got, we've got some utilization imbalance issues here a little bit. We're 73% at Berkeley, 89% at Blair, 85% at Hornsby and 85% at Towano. Looking at your socioeconomic status, we're, we're right in that 10% range, 32 to 42%. 15.7% of students would not attend their first or second closest school. We have fewer areas that are impacted in this map compared to some of the other ones that we had. We don't have any additional neighborhood splits. Here's our side by side. So our middle school option six. On the right, the current boundaries on the left. Two distinct detached zones for Blair. Okay, here's the fun slide. So this is the, the criteria comparison that we did for the original options two, one, two and three. And we also, we added four, five and six in here. And so going from across the categories on the top, so this is utilization. So the difference between the highest and the lowest utilized school, so lower is going to be more balanced. And so right now, we're, we're 15% is the difference between the highest utilized school and the lowest utilized school. Options one, two and three are all really close along with options four and five. Option six, we kind of have that deviation because we have that lower utilization number at, at Berkeley and those higher numbers at the other three schools. Longevity, this is a, this is a factor of how long the plan is estimated to last. We had, we had really good, and it is related to the balance and utilization. We had good utilization balance in one, two and three. Four and, and five, we just had schools a little higher that we didn't necessarily want to have a little higher. We didn't want to have Blair or Towano high because that's where we anticipate growth. And Blair kind of has that new shiny appeal. We don't really know if we're going to get kids coming out of the woodwork when that school opens. And so those are just some concerns that I had there. Sure. Option six, so I have options four and five kind of as fair. And then option six, I kind of ranked as a poor because we have that low utilization at Berkeley and that, you know, high 80% utilization at the other three schools. And I can bounce back to these other numbers if you want to see them. And so here's option six where we have 89% at Blair and 85% at Hornsby, where we have that 73 at Berkeley in this one.
So in your estimation, in terms of longevity, anything over 85% in Towano? Like what's your trigger point there?
So for this one, for this one, it was, it was 89% at Blair.
Okay.
For this particular one.
Towano worries me more than Blair.
Sure. These are, these are somewhat subjective and we can, we can talk about it, but just based on, you know, comparing to what we had in options one, two and three, that's kind of where I felt those were. So our proximity percentage, this is the percentage of students that are, that are in close proximity to their schools. And so 79% will be going to the first or second closest school in, in option one, 81%, 75%. And then three, four and five, I mean, they're all really close. Looking at our neighborhood splits, we don't have anything split since we fixed that Ford's Colony oversight in options one, two, three, four and six. And then we do have that Powhatan Secondary split in option five. And so if we look at our, our socioeconomic balance here, again, our, our current delta is 31%. Option one, it was reduced to 18. Option two, 15. And then option three was 29% negligible difference. And then we've got options four, five, or four, five and six that are at 10%, 9% and 10%. And so just kind of backing up and looking at this, I think this really shows a, a good illustration of the balance and the keeping dogs in the bathtub game that we have with changing boundaries.
I'm not sure I've ever heard that.
Keeping two, it must be a Midwest thing. It's like keeping two dogs in a bathtub. You put one in, one jumps out. And so looking at this criteria, we've. So looking, looking at this criteria, we see.
That's the headline.
What we've done is we've, we've reduced the socioeconomic, you know, we've, we've improved the balance, but we've traded neighborhood splits and longevity for that. One other, so this is one other data point that I, that I kind of put together and I thought that it may come up. What this is, is this is a, a school composition chart for each of the, each of the new schools per option. And so option one, this shows the current, this would be the proposed boundary. And then the bar would correspond to the composition of those students. And so all the students that would be in Berkeley were always Berkeley students in option one. And then Blair would be composed of, if we look across the top here, roughly 45% of the students would come from Berkeley and 55% of the students would come from, what's the pink? Hornsby. Then now, this is a little confusing, but I think it's important. The numbers that are on the bars correspond to the percentage of the actual students today. And so Berkeley would be left with 74% of the students that it has today. The other 26 would go to Blair. And so you look at the, you look at the size of the bars relative to the top to kind of get the percentage of students in that, in the new school. And then the numbers on the bars show you the composition. And so those kids, those, those Berkeley kids in Blair represent 26% of all the Berkeley kids this year. And so you can see in option one, we've got a pretty good split. We're, we're pretty close to 50/50 at Blair between Hornsby and Berkeley students. And the colors of these bars correspond to the colors that we had on all the maps. And so Hornsby is going to be green, Berkeley's going to be purple and then, I'm sorry, Towano's green, Hornsby's pink and Berkeley would be purple. And so you can see in, in, in option one, we've got, you know, roughly 75/25 if we're looking at the composition of the school. And then it's 20% of the Towano kids from this year would go to Hornsby next year. So I, I think what's just important, looking at this, is that in option, options one and two, there's just some pretty significant splits as just, just as far as student population sizes go. We don't have anything splitting three ways in options one or two. Option three, we do have, we start to get some three-way splits. And so I think this is interesting, looking at, looking at Blair in option three. It's pretty close to a kind of 33/33 split as far as the students that would compose that school at that point. But we do have, you know, this 2% of students here from Towano that would end up at Hornsby. And so it's, it's kind of that low percentage, you know, some of that concern that you had about Scott's Pond, Scott's Pond was, you know, that, those low percentage areas. And so getting into options four, five and six, we start to see kind of more of the same where we have, you know, we have those three-way splits. And so in option five, this 5% right here, this is that one piece of Powhatan Secondary going from Hornsby to Berkeley. And so I just, I think this is a good, a good way to kind of illustrate what the composition of those, of those schools look like and what students are we talking about being in those schools once, once the changes are implemented? So that all being said, kind of our, our next steps here, so I want to kind of open it up for discussion. Are our options four, five and six worthy of further consideration? If so, will public input be part of the process? Are there any options that we should just eliminate from consideration between one through six? And so at this point, I'd like to open up any questions or anything else you guys would like to talk about?
Thank you, Mr. Leopold, appreciate it. So just a process reminder, our deadline for action on this is the first meeting in February, so our work session. So that means that unless we want to schedule another work session to discuss the, these maps, we should be discussing them today if, to the extent that we can. And then at the next meeting and be ready to take action at the first meeting in February, correct, Dr. Heron?
I think one of the key questions is if we want to consider any of the new options, if we're going to allow, if the board wishes to provide an opportunity for public input, we need direction tonight so we can put it out and provide that public input for the board before the next board meeting. And I believe other options, the first option's had two weeks of public input, is that correct?
Correct. 13 days, something like that.
I think we're not going to be able to.
Not quite two weeks. And so we can still do that if we get some direction tonight.
Dr. Beers?
Just make sure that we set the date, set whatever the date is and stick to it. Dr. Beers?
It looks to me as if option two and option four are pretty similar. And when you go back to that last slide, in terms of the distribution of the students from the various schools, is that, is that, am I looking at the right thing?
Yeah, I think that, I think that we use kind of option two kind of as a building point to get to option four. The difference being that we, we do have this 5% or this, you know, this low percentage split here in option four, whereas we don't have it in option two.
So I think the operable question is of the six, which ones could, this isn't what will you support, it's what could you support or what might, you know, what? And I think at the last meeting, the majority of the board agreed that option two was something that, that we favored. So is it fair to say we want to keep that one in, under consideration? Are there any others in addition to option two that a critical mass of the board would like to keep under consideration for further study and discussion at the next meeting?
I wouldn't mind option four to look at between option two and option four for me. Sorry. Option two and option four, because they are kind of similar, but I would be interested in what the public thinks between the two. In particular, I think we have a better socioeconomic balance in four, but the longevity, there's a little trade-off for the longevity. So what are we, but it's a 5% difference in socioeconomic, which is pretty significant for, for what do we have a difference in? But when we go back to that, the longevity between four and two.
What's your 5%?
Huh?
What's your 5%?
The 5% is between the socioeconomic.
Between 42 and 32?
Between option two and option four. Cause you've got a 10% spread. When you look at that chart, the.
Okay, I got you.
And then the longevity is, what was the longevity between two and four?
So two, two had, two had fairly, had good longevity because we've got, we've got Hornsby at 86%. We've got Towano at 79.
And then four is what?
Four, we have Towano at 87 and Hornsby at 80.
Yeah. So that is a jump.
It's that trade-off.
It's the trade-off of the 5%.
And, and kind of, this is just one of those things that, that we had to do a lot more things in order to move that socioeconomic needle because of where the kids are positioned.
The other thing that concerns me, the reason, I kind of, in looking at it between four and two, I like two more still because when you look at that chart of who, what kids are going to be like off on an island by themselves, I kind of, I feel for the ones in that chart, if you go back to that chart. Yeah, that one where you've got four, you've got the Hornsby 5% over there. I just.
That's one year. That's not like a neighborhood. Yeah, that's one year and then kids get used to it.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. It's not that big of a, so I guess I would want public opinion between two and four. That's what I would be interested in.
Does anyone agree with Ms. Hummel that four should stay on the table?
I agree. My only concern with four is the utilization, particularly at Towano. That's my biggest concern.
That's a pretty big jump, yeah. I, I like number four as well, but I wonder if there's like a compromise between two and four, but.
The, the issue that we had is that we just have to pull kids, you know, we, we just pulled as many kids as we can to get that Hornsby number up. Cause Hornsby's low and it's the largest middle school. Versus two. Where we've got Hornsby utilized a little better because we're not trying to pull kids out and send them to Berkeley to, to balance that, that socioeconomic's.
And Ms. Hummel and Ms. Zombi, is there anyone else who would like to keep four?
I mean, I think we should keep four as well. I still think I like two better. But, cause if I just look at, if you just look at two, you know, you have Towano at 28%. So, and they're, and they're kind of far afield. And if you just look at Berkeley, Blair and Hornsby, you'll, the difference you have between Berkeley, Blair and Hornsby is about 10, 11% SES. And that's not a bad number. And then you got also to be a little bit careful about what, about statistics too, because 32% at Hornsby is 244 kids, whereas at Blair it's 200. And so you actually have more free and reduced at, at Hornsby than you do at Blair. Berkeley's still at 280, but, and I also, I also just like the, having, having 60 fewer kids at Towano out of, out of the gate versus where we would be at option four, but.
Yeah, cause we're weighting criteria, longevity. Trumps.
Well, I don't know if it trumps, it's just, it's all in the, in the mix. You got to figure out which, which variable you put or weight to, which could vary from member to member, so.
One thing I did want to point out is that in options four, five and six, if you recall, we, we basically had two different categories of options. We had options that moved the Grove and we have options that moved that Merrimack Trail area. We, in, in four, five and six, the Grove is in play in every single one of them because it's the only way that we can really get that balance better just because of the, the sheer number of students in the Grove versus that Merrimack Trail area.
So two and four, any, any other? Dr. Beers, any other?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I think if I understand correctly, we'd like to look at options two and options four at the next meeting, just the two. We do want to go out to the public for that?
I don't see a reason why.
Okay. Yeah, I, well, I just didn't know whether in the interest of, of allowing for community input, I didn't.
We still, I mean, we still allow for community input with, with, you know, how they communicate with us in, in general. But we had a third of the respondents to the middle school that we did to the high school. It's just.
And to Mr. Leopold's point, the neighborhoods, it's not different neighborhoods being impacted. So people had an opportunity to comment.
I'm fine. I'm fine either way if nobody else. If there's an opportunity to see. Opportunity to see, but then, and we have, it's easy to do and we have the time, then fine, but if not.
We, we do have some time because we have the next meeting, we, we're supposed to make a decision, the first meeting in February, is that correct?
Right, but presumably we would want the feedback in our hands before the next meeting so we could discuss it. Is there an opportunity to maybe not do anything as a, for? I, I think we do have an opportunity for public comment every meeting and we do have opportunity to be reached by phone and by email and by text, but none of those are anonymous. And so if someone would like to provide anonymous feedback, is there an opportunity to do that between now and a time that we can receive and review it by the 16th?
There'll be an opportunity to put those two maps up tomorrow by the end of the day and go through a survey process. I'll get Mr. Leopold to speak to that and then close it down the Friday before the next board meeting so that the board has an opportunity to look at the feedback well in advance of the meeting. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, what I can do is I can just remember how I did the recorded PowerPoint presentation. I can do the same thing. We can, we can just have it for options two and four and then provide a survey just like we did for the other ones that we can have online responses and then provide those, those results to you the Friday before.
I mean, yeah, did that way.
I'd like to see the community have, be able to supply input.
Yeah, particularly anonymously, because where we are, the nature of the comments are sometimes different. Okay. Anything else on this before we move? Okay, so in the meantime, if you have any, as you study this, please provide questions to Dr. Heron sooner rather than later. And this time, I'll try to follow my own advice on that. Thank you, Mr. Leopold. Appreciate it very much.
Hopefully, it warms up.
Yes, please take your cold weather with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item eight point zero one, annual review of standard operating procedures. So typically, this is something that has gone through policy committee, just as a review, and then brought to the board through that, through that committee. And so I thought, and we review this every year, and I thought that because we've done that the last two years, is that right, Mr. Kelly? Was that right, Sandy? Okay, so I thought
At least the last two years, I think you do it every year.
So I thought we could just do that again if the policy committee agrees.
Be happy to do that again.
Excellent, okay, thank you. If you could put that on your next agenda and circle back to us at your earliest convenience, that would be fabulous. All right. And that moves us to policies. Item nine point zero one, revised policy BD squad meetings. This, as usual, after discussion, assuming discussion goes as planned, would go on our consent agenda for the next meeting, so. Dr. Heron?
I don't know, anyone have any comments on the redlined version of the policy?
You have, no questions? All right, so that'll go on the consent agenda. All right, the next item is action item ten point zero one, personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Motion passes. Item ten point zero two, approval of minutes from the December twelfth, two thousand seventeen meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the twelve, December twelfth, two thousand seventeen meeting.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. And then the next is ten point zero three, resolution R dash one dash eighteen, Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move approval of resolution R one dash eighteen, Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week for WJCC principals.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Heron, do you want to talk a little bit about how important principals are?
Certainly, principals obviously lead our schools. They are on the front line of all of the work that's done in WJCC as an organization. And we really value their instructional leadership and building management and everything they do for our students every single day. And certainly, we say a big thank you to each and every one of them.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Sosa, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Onby?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye. Resolution passes. That brings us to item eleven point zero one, board member comments. Ms. Onby?
I welcome everyone back and hope that families and students had an opportunity to get rested and recharged and wish our students well as they move into their finals in the next couple of weeks. I won't say anything about snow.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
I really have not much to say, except I hope everybody is warm out there and the pipes aren't bursting. And that I appreciate the emails and phone calls that I've gotten from my constituents the last few weeks referencing the operation of the school board.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Young?
I just wanted to make a comment that I want to congratulate the students at War Hill for providing a soup kitchen and hams and turkeys. I'm in awe of them. I think that's an amazing endeavor for high school students. And I want to congratulate our principals. I do believe that we have some of the most amazing principals in our school district. And I want to thank them for their hard work and tireless efforts on behalf of our students.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Young. Ms. Hummel?
Happy New Year. I hope everyone is staying warm, and I'm looking forward to the snow personally.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I have a go back?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, tonight, we voted for school board officers. I'd like to thank you and Mrs. Onby and Mrs. Hummel for stepping up to take those leadership positions. They are not, they come with no fanfare and confetti, but there are a lot of work. And so I appreciate the three of you stepping up to serve that role.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Anything else? Okay, that brings us to upcoming events. Let's see. So in, on the twenty-second and twenty-third of this month, the Virginia School Board Association hosts their Capitol Conference, which gives us an opportunity to learn about what's going on in Richmond, and then also perhaps meet some of our General Assembly delegation. On the twenty-third, the VSB A also hosts new chair and new board member orientation. I believe Ms. Onby will be going to new chair orientation, so that's great. And then also, I wanted to mention, I don't have the date off the top of my head, but the school board is having a retreat at the end of this month, the twenty-sixth, thank you. And then upcoming meetings, we have a budget retreat this Saturday morning at eight AM here in
Eight.
Eight.
Why so early?
Bright and early. Early bird gets the worm. Here in the annex at Central Office. And then on the sixteenth of January, we have a closed session at six in Building F on Mount Spay Road. So the rest, the remainder of the year, with very few exceptions, we are going to be in, at Mount Spay, right?
We're
For regular meetings, thank you.
For work sessions.
Not for work sessions, work sessions are here.
Still here.
And then followed, our closed session at six will be followed at six-thirty by a public hearing on the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget. And immediately after that public hearing, we will start our regular meeting. And then on the sixth of February, we will start here in, at Central Office at six PM on the sixth, followed by our work session at six-thirty, which we will take action on the middle school maps. And then on the twentieth of February, we'll have a closed session at six PM in Building F, followed by a regular meeting in Building F at six-thirty, all of that on the twentieth. So that's upcoming meetings. And then as far as setting the next agenda, we have the proposed agenda items, the code of conduct, the school's foundation, and then redistricting will remain on the agenda for discussion. We will also hear a presentation on the School Health Initiative program. We will hear an equity presentation. We will hear about the program of studies.
It may be delayed until the first meeting in February.
Okay. And then graduation requirements will be paired with that?
With that, absolutely.
Great. Anything else? Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.